Everyone and welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteen, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel nine Comcast, Xfinity, Channel thirty seven Verizon FiOS, and livestream at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing one six four six five five eight eight six five six and enter meeting ID eight three zero nine six five nine nine two seven sorry seven two nine one. Then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on the telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they enter the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. All votes will be roll call in alphabetical order. I want to thank John O'Neal from the Town's IT Department as well as our friends at WCTV who will be recording this meeting for further viewing. And I do want to wish our viewers a happy fifth night of Hanukkah. Roll call Selectmen Bendel.
Present.
Selectmen Kyra.
Present.
Selectmen DePalma.
Present.
Selectmen Omahaoni.
Here.
And I am present as well. The board did just is reconvening from executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of real property at sixty-four Wildwood Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty-one A six. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town as so determined by the chairman. And further to consider the executive session minutes from October twenty-six, two thousand twenty, November nine, two thousand twenty, November twenty and November twenty-third, two thousand twenty in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty-two. I will note that those three sets of minutes were not ruled on as we did end up running out of time. And I would ask that those who are able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. We do have transmitting of the territory warrants, numbers twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two B, twenty-three, twenty-three A, twenty-four and twenty-four A. Do I have a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Motion by Miss Omahaoni, seconded by Mr. DePalma. All those, I'm sorry, we'll do this roll call. Selectmen Bendel.
Yes.
Selectmen Kyra.
Oh, I'm a yes, but do we have a picture of a woman and a dog there? Okay.
I think that was a minimized screen.
Sorry about that. Enjoy.
It was adorable.
Wondering what happened. I thought I screwed something up.
I thought I screwed something up too.
I thought I did.
Coming.
Don't worry everyone, it was me.
It's Mr. DePalma.
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am a yes. We have two sets of minutes tonight. We have the October twenty-six, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. Seen none. All those are, I gotta get out of this. Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. DePalma.
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni.
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Next set of minutes is November twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. Seen none. Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. DePalma.
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, a busy man. We move on to our first appointment, which is with our Health Director Shelley Newhouse and William Kavanaugh, our Fire Chief, for an update on COVID-nineteens. I want to thank both of you for being here.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Ms. Newhouse. How are you?
I'm okay. Busy. If you saw today, I posted that we had a hundred and ninety-eight active cases and we have six over six hundred in quarantine, but we're up to two hundred cases now because I just got two more in a little while ago. It is really, really busy. I'm seeing, I think the effects of Thanksgiving is what we're seeing now. Transmission is within households. So we're seeing, you know, one person picks it up somewhere and brings it back and it's just going rampant through a whole household. And then the contacts just go from there. Contact tracing has been proven to be very, very challenging in the town and in the schools. It's, that's what consumes most of the work. It's just, you know, we had twenty-five to do today and people are wondering why we are not calling them and like we're getting to you, we'll get to you. It just takes a long time because there's a lot of questions. I'm hoping that it will quiet down around Christmas. I'm hopeful, but we'll see what happens. I'm not, I'm not sure. There's just, we're at, Wilmington is at a seven point six positivity rate, which is the highest positivity rate of any of the surrounding towns around us. So that means, you know, we're, we're up there in the ratio of testing and positives. So higher than Bill Recker, Tewksbury, even Woburn. We're higher than all of them. And I'm just finding it, like I said, transmission is in households. And it's just putting a big strain on, on us, but we're managing. We're doing okay. Some of the next big things that we've, that you've probably heard in the past week is about the COVID vaccine. So that's coming. We're gonna, we're first seeing it today in hospitals and those clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers. This is a good slide right here that I've been posting on social media that sort of explains if someone's wondering when they can get a COVID vaccine. So for the general public, you're probably looking at late, late spring or which is will be in the phase three. And that all could change. We'll just keep an eye on it. If you see, also another big thing is the governor has rolled back the whole state to phase three, step one, which is the white column. So normally we would be headed that way because of the metrics, us being Wilmington being in the red. But really this, the governor did it for us. He is basically rolled back the whole state to phase three, step one. So you'll see that that's what it affects. Everyone's been really great. I haven't heard, it's only been a day because it just started yesterday, but I haven't really heard that nobody's complying. So we'll just take that how it comes. If people complain and we can go over everyone, but I'm pretty sure that everyone's heard the news and they can, they'll abide by what's going on. So I'm not sure. Does anyone have any questions?
Shelley, how is the, how's the department doing?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I was just asking, how is your department managing with this?
It's been stressful the past, since Thanksgiving. It's been a lot. Where we've, we have a couple additional nurses that we hired to help us do contact tracing because it's, you know, a lot of people were just, a lot of our contacts and our patients were just getting lost out there with the contact tracing collaborative. So we needed to really make sure we get a hold of our people that were, were all of our positives and all of our quarantines. So it's just, it's just not ending. It's all day long and all night long, all weekend. But, you know, COVID doesn't stop, so you just take the cases as they come.
Well, I want to open it up to the board, but certainly appreciate you and your staff and all the long hours and all the, the hard work that you're putting in. Any other members have any questions or comments from Ms. Newhouse? Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and all Chiefs for being here. You kind of beat me to my question there about was about the additional staffing and just wanted to make sure we gave a plug to residents who may get a call from somebody who's not you. Shelley, and they're calling on behalf of you and I'm sure they're indicating that when they call, but certainly, you know, if you do get that call and it's not Shelley herself that we have added some staff to try to deal with the volume of calls. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear for residents. So I appreciate them and I hope, my question for you, I hope that's working out for you. I hope that, hoping you can get the volume.
Yeah, it's, it's on Mondays, the state does the training for the online reporting system. So my other two nurses that we have come on are taking that training today. And, you know, these nurses are, these are just part-time helpers because they have a regular job. So they have their job and then they're just helping us out, you know, part, on a part-time basis, doing a couple of cases a day.
And I should.
Because even one full-time person couldn't, wouldn't be able to keep up.
Thank you again.
Chief Kavanaugh, how's the Fire Department handling this?
Good evening. So we're doing well. I know Chief Desmond is on the air, but I'm happy to report that we are back to full strength across the board through Fire Police and Dispatch. Everyone is back. Everyone is healthy. It's a plus. We have been able to obtain some more PPE. Just luck of the draw is up at our, our supplier last week and was able to grab shipments as they were coming off the truck of a ninety-five mask. So that's helpful as well. We have a pretty healthy stockpile right now of Tyvek suits, gloves, eye protection, surgical masks, things of that, of that nature. The CARES Act, as Mr. Hall tells you guys, every, I think every opportunity he gets is ending at, in about two weeks. So what that does, it shuts down any reimbursements we're going to get through, through the schools, through the food service and the additional twenty-five percent that FEMA doesn't cover. I know the schools have something going on right now where they've been using that grant money and the, the food service actually Rebecca Sanderson told me last week, the food service has their own grant coming out now as well, which is good. It's very helpful. However, we're not going to see the, the offset, the twenty-five percent offset that FEMA doesn't pick up from January first on. So hoping that the push this time around isn't nearly as bad as it was in the spring. Shelley does a great job keeping us up with the list of positives, just addresses so that we know we can be safe and hopefully not bring that back into the station. As of current date, we have received about six hundred and seventy-two thousand in reimbursement from CARES. We also got a sixteen thousand dollar payment at the very beginning. It had to do with our ambulance service with, with transporting COVID patients. So that, that's what we've received so far. There's far more than that number that's put into the FEMA system. However, unlike CARES, FEMA is going to take quite a bit of time to get processed through. They don't have an end date for the project yet. So we, to put it in perspective, I believe, Mr. Hall, if I'm, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had a storm in two thousand and eighteen, spring of two thousand and eighteen, and we got reimbursed for it. I believe at the very beginning of this fiscal year. So it, it takes considerable amount of time to get a FEMA reimbursement where the upside of the CARES grant is we have been getting it about every, if we put in the project, Rebecca Sanderson puts in the project, it's about six weeks we're getting Brian Perry's receipt. So besides that, we're doing well. We're staying healthy and we are, you know, taking all the necessary precautions to make sure that we keep our people healthy. Shelley has been keeping us in the loop again on the COVID vaccine. So when that comes out, that'll be offered to all the first responders in the building and try to get our people taken care of that way.
Thank you, Chief Kavanaugh.
Could I just say something? I, I wanted to let everybody know that food insecurity is really, it's, it's an issue in Wilmington and you'd be surprised, you wouldn't think that it is, but you know, with whole households being quarantined quickly, sometimes they're at a loss as to how they're going to get food and meals. So we've had some great help from the Food Service Department at the schools and from the elderly services delivering some meals, but if anyone's out there that wants to be an anonymous food deliverer person or with meals or anything, just message me, private message me and I would love to see that happen so I can get some food to families that are, you know, they just don't have the means to do it. It's not that they can't afford it or, or they just can't get it. They don't, you know, if they're quarantined, they're, how are they going to get to the grocery store and how are they going to get meals and it's the holidays and and people are worried about how they're going to shop and get Christmas presents. It's been, you know, that's an issue for some of these families.
Through you, Mr. Hall, if you could ask our IT Department to make a social media push tomorrow so that Ms. Newhouse can get some, some, I guess, good Samaritans this Christmas season to, to help out with the food insecurity and, and help them stay compliant with quarantine.
And Shelley, we, putting on a different hat for a moment, you know, Wild helped out back at the beginning of the summertime with meal delivery and grocery shopping and if I put it out, we could get a lot of volunteers through that too. So I'll just work with you directly on what I, what information you want me to put out there.
Okay.
If, if I can also just add on that note, I wanted to just thank the community during the Santa Parade. It was incredible amount of food that was collected along with toys. According to the food pantry, it was the largest single day donation they've ever had. And there's a lot of great people in this community who gave a lot that day.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I just want to again thank the police and fire for what they've been doing and want to especially thank Shelley and her department for the work that, that she's been doing. I, I know firsthand what she's been dealing with. So thank you, Shelley, for all that. The, the vaccines that are coming out, is that something that you, when it comes to Wilmington, is that something that you're going to be giving out? Or is that something that is given up by CVS or Walgreens or, or, or do, or will you be doing that?
We'll be doing that in phase three. So right now, the first shipments will go to our three long-term care facilities and CVS is, will be administering the vaccinations to them. Haven't heard, nor has any health department heard when we're actually getting vaccines to give out to the general public. So as you know, there was those steps like phase one, phase two, phase three. So in phase one and two, it'll probably be more like a CVS, Walgreens, sort of like a private, almost private vaccinations where you would see like a CVS or a Walgreens or the long-term care facilities get their vaccines first. And then phase two, you know, early education in schools, not really sure. Again, it could, I think it's probably going to work like a flu clinic. This year we had CVS help us out just because of the, the sheer number of flu shots that we were going to give out and they helped us. They gave all the teachers flu shots at the school. So I'm hoping that they can do the same thing for, with the COVID vaccine for us.
Yeah, well, and one of the reasons why I'm asking is an RN reached out to me and said that he would like to volunteer when the vaccines come in to help, you know, with, you know, Board of Health in Wilmington and
Yep.
How should I, should I call you or should I, how do you want me?
He can shoot me an email if he wants.
Okay.
I was, we've been already thinking of how we're going to run a large-scale vaccination clinic, clinic. And I'll need a lot of nurses and because I'd like to do it over, you know, if I did it in one whole day, I can't have one set of nurses working all day long. So I'd like to split up a shift. So I'll need quite a few nurses.
So I'll just give him your town email to contact you directly. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kyra, because you reminded me of a question I got from a resident. You know, thinking a few months down the road, but Shelley, you touched upon it that when it will come for phase three where we're hopefully vaccinating almost everybody. Do we have a safe and secure place where we'll be able to store this? I mean, do we need to start thinking about where we can store this? I mean, I know Jeff's office can be pretty cold in this, with the air conditioner going, but I don't think it's going to be efficient.
Depending on which vaccine we get, they, if we get the one that needs to be held at minus seventy degrees, it comes packed in dry ice. So and it'll come in boxes of nine hundred, which will, that dry ice will be able to keep for up to fourteen days, but the timeline is, you know, if we got the vaccine on a Monday, we would want to be vaccinating people within a week. So it'll be that quick that we'll have to plant a clinic and get the vaccine out. So and we can store it in the nurse's office. I have had a local business in town offer up their freezers for me if I needed to store it there. So we have that opportunity, but we, so we won't need to go out and buy any equipment to store the vax, the vaccines, nor will we have to buy any syringes or anything like that. It's all going to come, all comes together as a package, which is nice.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
DePalma.
Maybe when you go over social media or Jeff has everyone go over social media, you can put out a shout to nurses that would be willing to volunteer. And Mrs. Newhouse can start a, you know, an entry to have these people already available for her.
You read my mind. I'm going to do that.
All right. So, Mr. Hall, do you have anything to add?
Yes, just a couple of things. First of all, again, as if Shelley doesn't have enough to do, she continues to pursue grant funding. We did receive another grant, I believe it was for five thousand or fifty-six hundred dollars. I think this is the third one we received for dealing with the COVID-related issues. And then separately, Pam McKenzie received a call from the Lowell Five. They were looking to make a donation of five thousand dollars and we've directed that towards COVID. So, you know, that's going to be helpful. All, all said and done, though, I do anticipate we'll wind up going to the Finance Committee in the coming year to seek funding from the reserve account for money that is in excess of the budget. And even though we're going to be pursuing money through FEMA, as the chief has indicated, the reimbursement is typically about two years out.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Newhouse, Chief Kavanaugh, I assume Chief Desmond that you'll be staying on for the next appointment, but I do want to thank you again both the Health Department and the Fire Department as well as the Police Department for your continued diligence. It's very much appreciated and keep it up. We'll next move on to our seven fifteen appointment with Samantha Reeve, the Health and Recovery Coordinator of the Wilmington Police Department regarding the introduction of Erin McCauley, a recovery coach. Good evening, Samantha.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about the, this new position that is being added to the Police Department? The individual that's been hired to, to take the reins.
Absolutely. Chief Desmond, did you want to say anything first or do you want me to just jump in?
No, you can just jump in. I'll say a few things after.
Okay. So yeah, so two years ago, we were thankful enough to get in partnership with Parry and we were on a two-year grant for a recovery coach. And this past August, that grant ran out. And so probably about a year or so ago, we started having conversations about how to propel this, this addition to my team and kind of to enable, once the grant ended, for that to not just be the end of the recovery coach within the department. And so thankfully, you know, there's a great group of people here in Wilmington who were super on board with this. And over the last year, we've been able to, you know, secure funding and interview and have a huge plethora of individuals to apply. And about a month ago, we hired a recovery coach, Erin McCauley, who's here tonight. And she has, she comes to us with a really wonderful wealth of background, both lived experience and professional education. She's currently getting her associate's degree from North Shore Community College in Behavioral Health. She has a number of certifications, including a twelve-step certification, a peer mentorship certification, Narcan certified. She's CPR trained and is a certified recovery coach through C-CAR. And once kind of COVID runs down a little bit, hopefully will the Massachusetts kind of licensing body will reopen and she'll be able to become duly licensed there also. She also has a, a great history of and kind of experience running meetings and just working with clients and meeting them where they're at. She herself, I'll let her share a little bit about herself, but she has five years of recup, in recovery. She lives with her husband and their five kids. She, she knows the system so well, whether it's through her lived experience or through just helping clients and already being emerged in working with people currently. So I will let Erin introduce herself a little bit more and then I'll jump back on to kind of run through what she will be doing and offering to the team.
Thank you, Samantha. I'm Erin. I want to say hello to everyone. I'm excited to be working in the town of Wilmington with the Wilmington Police Department and the Fire Department. Samantha, I have just about five years clean. August twenty-second is my date. So I'm excited to be here, working with Samantha and learning a lot, helping out anyone with mental health and substance abuse in the community in Wilmington and the surrounding cities that touch Wilmington.
So Erin has already, she jumped right into it. She has been with us for about two or three weeks now and has already started reaching out to clients. She has met a good number of the officers, building rapport with some of the clients that I've handed off to her. And I tasked her with being on a team that will be doing an Alcaton for Christmas Eve and Christmas. So that is a round the clock, twenty-four, seven meeting for folks who just need some additional support on or before the holidays. So she'll be working on a multi-team, multi-town team to put that on. It'll start about midday on Christmas Eve and go all the way through to Christmas. She's also going to be resuming the monthly podcast that the formal recovery coach had been doing. She will be co-facilitating a weekly recovery meeting in collaboration with Tewksbury Police Department. So that'll be every Thursday and is open to the public. She'll be getting involved with the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition and like I said, she'll be continuing to reach out to folks and, and, and meet people where they're at, whether it's harm reduction or, you know, keeping people safe if they're still actively using, providing tools and resources, getting folks into treatment, whatever that might look like for an individual. So I'm really excited to have her join our team. And I, I genuinely believe she is, you know, a wonderful, wonderful person and will only help to benefit the, the folks of Wilmington who we serve already.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve. Chief, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank, you know, the town manager and, you know, yourselves, the board and the citizens of the town for voting this position in. You know, it's one thing to have a grant to do a trial run, but when it comes down to, you know, whether the program has value or not, it's when the town actually has to. you know, whether the program has value or not, um, it's when the town actually has to, uh, pay for the position. And, uh, this past, uh, summer, we decided to, you know, when the grant ran out, to keep this program going. And I think it's a, it's a worthwhile addition to what Samantha does, and, uh, we look forward to working with Erin.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. McCauley, we, uh, this, this board has a high level of respect for the work that Ms. Reeve does. So I, I think you're, uh, you're in good hands with her, uh, supervision. And certainly, we wish there was not as much work for, for you to do, but I'm certainly happy to support this initiative to, to bring you aboard. I did wanna open it up to other board members for questions or comments. Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Chief, and ladies, thank you for being here. Uh, wanna wish you obviously best of luck. But I just wanna give a reminder to folks out there who are, um, have challenges, that we have resources available to you. Uh, and that you're not alone. The Wilmington Police Department stands ready to help you, and Wilmington takes its commitment to helping people who are battling substance abuse very seriously. And, uh, we know, understand that this, um, time of year can be difficult for folks. Uh, never mind the pandemic on top of it. So if you're out there and you're listening and you have, uh, yourself have some challenges and need some help, please reach out. And if you have a loved one, um, who is, um, dealing with some issues, please feel free to reach out. Um, so thank all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Ms. Omahony?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. First, welcome, uh, Erin to the town. Um, and Chief, I just wanted to commend, once again, kinda commend you and Samantha. Um, you know, we're really, I don't think people really understand in Wilmington how proactive we have been, um, with this issue. And I'm so proud of what we've been doing, because I think, again, kinda given everything that's been going on this year, um, obviously, uh, people struggling with addiction issues on top of a pandemic are, are feeling it um, so much right now. And resources that were available to them, like in-person meetings and in-person therapy and things that we would hope they would stay connected to, uh, became more difficult for them. And, and yet, here we are again in Wilmington, adding resources to help alleviate that. And that only helps in so many other areas that you, as the chief and, and our police force has to deal with. Um, so I'm just so proud that we continue to add resources to help um, really address all of the issues around, um, the struggles of the town. We don't, we don't really just, you know, try to hit one issue. We're trying to spearhead it. We're trying to be proactive. And I'm just so proud and grateful that we continue to look for these types of resources. And Erin, I know, you know, your work with Samantha and the chief and the rest of the department is gonna just only help to, to continue to keep us safe and, and to keep people safe, um, in times like these when, when struggles are even more, um, elevated than, than normal.
Alright, well, welcome aboard, Ms. McCauley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve. Thank you, Chief Desmond, for for spearheading, uh, this initiative. And we're, uh, I guess we wish we didn't have the work to give you, but, uh, we're glad to put you to work. And, uh, certainly best of luck.
Just if I can add, so if, uh, anyone out there who's watching or watching this afterwards or knows someone, um, they can contact Erin R.I. by either calling the Police Department or the Fire Department. They can stop into the station. Um, and they'll be routed up to us. And, uh, we would love to talk to them, connect them to resources or whatever they need.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve. Alright, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now we're now on to our seven thirty appointments with Paula Looney, the Town Engineer, regarding the conveyance of property at Route Thirty-eight Cross Street in the Route Thirty-eight Corridor Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, Paula Looney, Town Engineer.
Uh, Mr. Looney.
Thank you. Here to, uh, discuss um, a small parcel of land that's being conveyed to the town, um, for one dollar to facilitate roadway improvements. Uh, the parcel is located at the north corner of the, uh, Cross Street and Main Street intersection. It's highlighted on your screen now. Um, approximately thirty-six hundred square feet of land. It's, um, currently owned by the owner of, um, the six thirteen Main Street parcel, which is actually across the street. It's the former Expedex parcel. Um, this parcel land came along with that deed. Um, i- it's kinda behind Charlie's Autobody there. Um, when they were in front of the planning board recently for site improvements to the Expedex parcel, uh, this parcel came up. And actually, they were in front of the Board of Selectmen too, for an earth removal permit back in, I believe, June. But during the planning board process and a pre-staff meeting, this parcel came up because it's it's critical for the geometric realignment of the Cross Street, Main Street and Butters Row intersection. Um, that's part of the Route Thirty-eight Corridor Improvement Project. And if I could, um, share my screen now with the board, I can show you the, um, the future plans of that intersection. Highlighted. And let me know if, um, if y'all can see this screen? Or this, uh,
You can.
Okay, so, uh, just to go through the colors here, in red is, um, the current alignment of the Main Street, Butters Row and Cross Street intersection. Um, in blue here is the proposed realignment of the intersection. You can see the safety advantages here. It comes in at a T-intersection, which is what you always wanna strive for, for, uh, an intersection, rather than coming in at an escud angle. Um, I also showed here in green the parcel to be conveyed to the town for, uh, for the dollar. Um, so this Route Thirty-eight Corridor Project, just quickly, it's, um, you know, stretches from the Woburn City Line to, um, north to Route Sixty-two. It's, um, still on schedule to commence construction in twenty-twenty-three. Um, and I think MassDOT at this point is, um, at the seventy-five percent design plan, um, phase of the project. So with that, um, I believe the acceptance deed for this parcel is, was provided in the selectmen's packets. Um, and it's for review under an item to this, um, to consider. But I'm happy to answer any questions about, um, this deed or parcel that I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omahony. Any, any members have any questions or comments?
So I, I just had a question, uh, based on kind of the projected changes. Um, Mr. Looney, is that gonna connect to the existing Butters Row Bridge? Or is there plans to kind of also address that issue? That's been a concern for quite some time.
Yeah, great question. Um, so this realignment solves two problems on that front. The, the first is just coming to a T-intersect, or cross intersection. Um, and there's a vertical curve in Main Street too, that is, makes site distance challenging. Um, so, but it also, um, the Butters Row Bridge is scheduled for twenty-twenty-two to be, um, uh, reconstructed to a two-lane bridge, as you know. Um, but if you've ever, I'm sure you've driven that, to that bridge before, the approach to that bridge, it's, um, has a vertical curve to it to get over the tracks, right? So this, by swinging the road, uh, northerly, uh, Butters Row, I mean, um, to align now with this new intersection, it elongates that stretch. So it makes a much gentler, um, approach to that bridge, rather than, uh, I think it's at like six or seven percent now, uh, grade, which is fairly steep. So, uh, short answer is, uh, yes, it is. Uh, the Butters Row Bridge is contemplated in this design. And it happens to be the same design engineer as well.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Are there proposals, uh, is there a proposal for lights there?
Uh, yes, sir.
Oh, that's the, uh, warrant for traffic lights.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so unless there's any other, uh, questions or comments, I, uh, and unless there's any objection, uh, we can move forward to the agenda item number seven, which is the board to consider the accepting the donation of map forty, parcel thirteen, parcel thirteen A located at the corner of Main Street, Route Thirty-eight and Cross Street. Motion.
So moved, Mr. Chief.
Motion by Mr. De Palma, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Kyra. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De Palma, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Okay, I thought you froze for a second. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahony?
Yes.
Nice, yes, as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Looney.
Hey, thank you very much.
Have a good night. Alright. Alright, just a moment behind, or a minute behind schedule is really the, the reason why probably everyone else at home is watching. Uh, we are joined by, uh, Chaz Fiori, who is the reason why most people are currently stuck in traffic. Mr. Fiori, welcome.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, by the way.
Happy Christmas to see you as well.
So at least most of us have watched the Great Christmas Light Fight, um, last Wednesday. And congratulations to you and your family for, uh, spoiler alert, winning the fifty thousand dollar prize for having the best uh, Christmas light display. But why don't you tell us a little bit about how you got into, uh, decorating a, the parents' house for, uh, for Christmas?
So I've just, I've always been enjoying the lights and decorating for people to come see. And it's always just, I've always wanted to go bigger and bigger. And it just got to this point where it became huge. And then the news found out, and then the show found out and asked if I'd like to be be on it. And then I got on, and now, uh, here we are.
So the, if I'm correct, the, the actual episode was filmed last year, correct?
That is correct.
But you've, you've recreated everything and brought the entire village back for this year, right?
That is correct.
How many lights?
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Well, Reddy Municipal Light thanks you for keeping them in business.
Yeah.
So what really inspired the, this, uh, multiple structure, uh, environment that you've created?
Well, about two years ago, I had covered the entire house in lights. And I had run out of room to put more. So we decided we needed to create some stuff to add more lights to. And I was inspired by a street in Disney's Hollywood Studios that kind of, they did something similar, a light display. And I tried to recreate something like that.
How did you build these things?
Uh, they're just, they're basically just facades. They're just, uh, regular two-by-four wall, just a flat wall. And there's, um, these kind of towers, we call them, made out of four-by-fours weighted by fifty-five gallon water barrels that, uh, the faces are bolted right onto those.
So I, I should probably assume that you're a graduate of Shawshank Tech then, right?
Yes, I am.
Of course. Best technical school in the land.
Yes.
I, I certainly wanted to thank you for, uh, all of the, um, the happiness that you've brought. A lot of people that have been swinging by. Uh, it's certainly been a difficult year, but, uh, thank you for your efforts, for putting smiles on, uh, lots of folks' faces. I did wanna open it up because I'm sure my colleagues wanna have some, uh, some questions or comments for you too. Mr. Bendel, I see you jumping out of your chair.
That would actually be the second time I've done that. At first, uh, this week was when the show was on. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, Chaz, good to see you. Congratulations, uh, you know, my wife and I, we watched, we were really thrilled. Uh, when you guys, you know, we were really excited for you. But I wanted to mention that, you know, everybody at the school was really proud of you. Obviously, you and your brother, and even your dad are graduates of the school. And it's been kinda nice that everybody's been buzzing about leading up to the show. When it happened, everybody's been talking about it and, and also in town too. It's been nice to talk about something positive. We've had so many negative things going on in twenty-twenty that this is a great way to, to finish out the year. And, uh, I think we should just, you know, cut twenty-twenty right now after that victory. Uh, it, it was really exciting, especially when the Patriots are not having a great season. It was nice to root for something that you really are rooting for. And, uh, our school is really proud of you. I know your shop teachers are all excited and, uh, really proud of you and wanna thank you. I know the residents of the town are really excited for you. Having been over there myself, it's worth the wait. So sorry about the traffic, but it's all good. So, Merry Christmas. Thank you very much for all you've done.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes, uh, congratulations, Chaz. That's, uh, quite a, a feat. Congratulations to your family as well. I, I watched the, the whole show and I was excited to see Wilmington on national TV. It was, it was just great. It was, uh, very proud of, uh, of your accomplishments and, 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 uh, your family and, 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 uh, what you bring. But I, on a personal note, I'm probably gonna have to come by and see how you string the lights together, because I put five of my lights, strands of lights together outside my house and I blow the whole thing. So I, I, I see you're putting, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand lights together. So there must a special technique without me having to go to Shawshank Tech to learn how to do it. So I'll probably swing by the house, but uh, thank you. Uh, you represented Wilmington outstanding. Uh, it just, it's a, it's a beautiful display. Um, and hey, I live right down the street, so the, the traffic's okay. I go the other way, but people don't know about. So thank you and, uh, have a great Christmas.
You too. Thank you.
Mr. De Palma?
For once, it was good traffic. Everyone was enjoying themselves. I had a couple of friends that sat in line. They had to. And when they left, they were just amazed. I congratulate you. Uh, hopefully, maybe next year, we put out a challenge and tell everyone in the town, let's get the lights set. Let's light up Wilmington. You know, let's light them up. Uh, the question I have though is, when did you find out you actually won?
So
I'm actually obligated or allowed to say.
I didn't think so.
Don't actually know if I'm allowed to say.
Alright, pass.
Congratulations. I hope you do it again next year.
Thank you.
Ms. Omahony?
Yeah, I, I mean, just to echo what everyone else has said, this is, especially this year, it's so nice to have something so positive to see, um, to be represented on national television is amazing. So we thank you for representing Wilmington um, so strongly and positively. I know my kids have been, now that they drive, they've been in your driveway a lot. The last week or two, I've gone by. Um, I like the notice, the Facebook notice from the police, you know, reminding people of the traffic there. And again, for a positive and not, you know, because of anything uh, not so great. So we really appreciate it. Um, we love that you, you have become a landmark for the season uh, in Wilmington. And we hope you keep up the good work. And next year, you know, add on to the village. Let's see. Uh, instead of challenging the whole town of Wilmington, I'd love to see what, what, what parts you can add on next.
Uh, Mr. Hall, did you wanna, uh, do you have any questions or comments? I know you and I spoke earlier today about, uh, just some of the traffic, um.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, uh, the traffic aside, and, uh, I think in, has, has been mentioned, uh, given the year we've had, it's nice to be, uh, have a bright spot, literally and figuratively, and particularly here in Wilmington. So uh, great job. And, uh, uh, I'm, I'm sure you'll be having a lot of apprentices, looking how, looking at techniques on how they can, uh, uh, increase their, uh, wattage in the future.
Mr. Chair? Bendel?
Yeah, just Chaz, I know a bunch of people have asked, uh, what's the plan going forward? When are you guys gonna step down this year? A lot of people are wondering how much more time they have.
Uh, I, I don't know. I guess that depends how, how things go traffic-wise and everything. Um, I'd like to usually go to New Year's, but it, it depends how, it depends how things go.
Alright, Mr. Chair, if you'll excuse me, I better head over there right now.
Well, it's a good thing we don't have licenses on tonight. That's gonna keep us, uh, going for a couple more hours. But, Mr. Fiori, thank you. Congratulations again. Uh, I'm sure if he hasn't reached out to you already, Superintendent Jackson at the tech is gonna be reaching out with, uh, a pitch to, to add you to the alumni donor roll, uh, with that fifty thousand dollar warning. So uh, thank you again for, uh, for providing, uh, for painting Wilmington in a positive light. And for providing us with a, uh, a good venue to go to, uh, when we really can't go too many places. Uh, to, to look at the, uh, really amazing display that, uh, that you've, you and your brother and your friends have come up with. So, great work.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night, Mr. Fiori. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. You as well.
Alright, Mr. Hall, if you could take us through Communications?
Yes, uh, first under Communications was a press release from, uh, Governor Polito. Uh, Gov- Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito announcing the state rollback. Uh, Shelley mentioned it earlier, but uh, as you, uh, note, uh, outdoor gatherings have been limited to no uh as you uh note, uh outdoor gatherings have been limited to no more than fifty uh hosts of outdoor gatherings uh of more than twenty-five have to notify the Board of Health. Uh capacities in uh indoor settings have been reduced from fifty percent to forty percent. Uh restaurant patrons must wear masks at all times except when eating and drinking. Uh and there's a number of other provisions that have been uh put in place, but all in an effort to try to tamp down the uh the spread of COVID. Uh, next is uh similar correspondence from the A B C C and in large measure, it really mirrors what uh the governor and lieutenant governor have set out. Uh this in in particular deals with establishments uh licensed to serve alcohol. Uh, next is a memo from uh Shelley Newhouse uh just announcing uh the submission of uh an agreement for uh to be allowed to um provide the COVID vaccines. It serves as a COVID vaccine provider once the uh vaccines are provided to the town of Wilmington. Uh, we have correspondence uh from uh James Cashwell and uh others from the uh Olin Corporation. Uh, this is directed to EPA notifying them of a um a breach in the uh plastic membrane that uh is intended to uh uh service a uh cap for the uh temporary cap at the Olin site. Uh, this was identified uh recently on an inspection uh and they have been in touch with uh EPA about uh next steps and how they intend to uh address that issue. Um, this is um, as you see on the screen here, it's a fairly substantial uh area and you can actually see in the picture areas where the uh looks like a a plastic um almost like a what you would see as a plastic garbage type bag, but um the material has been torn. Uh, we also have correspondence from our consultant GeoInsight, so once we received notice of this uh we wanted to uh make sure GeoInsight had an opportunity to comment. Uh EPA provided a limited period of time for interested parties to offer comment on uh the types of uh remedies that uh Olin should be looking at. Uh, and while uh GeoInsight agreed with uh some of the uh recommendations that Olin is pursuing, they're suggesting a thicker, uh more uh durable liner, uh forty milliliter to sixty milliliter. Also, the prospect of providing some measure of uh soil cover so that when inspections are done, uh it doesn't uh risk damaging the material. Uh, and the expectation is that there will be a more stringent schedule of inspections uh on that um a temporary cap. Uh, next, under
Mr. Chair, just just a question on that uh to to Mr. Hull. I I don't know if you know Jeff, but has um Jim DiLorenzo, Lynn Jennings uh uh from EPA, have they been informed of this breach and uh
Yes.
Are they going to be acting upon it? How do we, how do we find out or what what's, what's the steps? Do they uh because this is, you know, this is not good news and certainly this didn't happen overnight and it it the the full blame is on Olin and lands on their laps and uh shame on them for letting this get so deteriorated where where it's tearing and ripping and uh so is EPA, have we heard anything from them? Have we received any communications from Jennings and DiLorenzo on this?
So the uh the first communication that uh was from Olin's uh consultant Wood uh actually went to um Melody Morash, who is uh one of the representatives at Olin at uh EPA. Uh, so her uh group in including Lynn Jennings were made aware of it. In fact, uh about an hour and a half ago, just prior to the meeting, I did see a uh email uh response uh to Olin, um and I have not had an opportunity to review it in detail, but I gather just from my brief review, it is uh their response and the expectations they're gonna have of Olin to um both remedy the situation in the short term, but also longer term in terms of a more robust monitoring. Uh, next, under uh correspondence, uh is an email from Sluckman Joe Marie Omahaoni. Uh, again, a further update on uh the MBTA Advisory Board happenings and I'll turn it over to Sluckman Omahaoni.
Sure. Thank you, uh Mr. Hull. This really isn't um much of an update. We did have another meeting on December fourth that I was able to attend. I'll just read you briefly the email. Um, so I was able to attend that December fourth MBTA Advisory Board meeting and I'm attaching the minutes for it from it in case any board members interested, as well as the report submitted by the Advisory Board to the MBTA. Basically agreeing with the proposed changes that will be going into effect on Monday uh as of today, December fourteenth. I'm attaching the report for the board as it's an interest, it's interesting to see the budgetary issues they've been facing and how these changes will potentially save a hundred and forty-five million dollars. The impact to Wilmington residents are that the commuter rail will stop at nine P M on weekdays and have no weekend service. There may be some changes in reductions in the scheduled times at non-peak hours. The subway system will also stop running at midnight in case any residents utilize that system. Residents are encouraged to go to the MBTA website to confirm their travel plans prior to using the system. Um, and that was the the extent of it. The meeting on December fourth was really to review um the recommendations um that the MBT Advisory Board was making to the MBTA on their chain, proposed changes and and in large part, it was to accept the proposed changes. There was a lot of discussion, again, from towns affected by the ferry service stopping completely uh around, you know, how the busing would look for them, other ways that they could potentially try to save money. Um, and I think there was actually an article in the Boston Globe this Sunday, which is an interesting read that a lot of these change, a lot of people are wondering uh what the duration of these changes are and and the reality is, is the MBTA response at this point is we need to wait and see what happens post-COVID. Um, because they believe commuting is going to change long-term now that people are working remotely and uh people's work life has changed. Um, it might impact the MBTA more long-term. So it's it's kind of an interesting time. Uh, there's not going to be another MBTA Advisory Board meeting until the spring. There wasn't a definite date given. So I probably won't have any further updates, but for the changes that are implemented as of today, anyone who utilizes any MBTA service, whether it's the commuter rail or the subway should go online and make sure that their schedule is not impacted or to look for alternatives if their schedule is.
Next, under uh correspondence is um communication from uh Kelly Maggie Wright, who is the Executive Director of Minuteman Services. Uh, this is an annual uh update from Minuteman Services, who is one of the uh providers of four senior services in Wilmington. Uh, and she reports uh that uh for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, they provided service to one thousand one hundred and twelve Wilmington residents uh and breaks it down in terms of various categories of uh care, including a hundred and eighty-five case management and in-house care visits. Sixteen caregiver support and counseling uh sessions, fifty-one protective service cases and four hundred and nine referrals to specific providers uh and this is further breakdown as well. Uh, next, we're into Board to Consider.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. First Board to Consider item is the request of Christina Stewart, Library Director, to use the Swain Green on Thursday, August twelfth two thousand twenty-one with a rain date of Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. From four P M to eleven P M for a seven P M performance of Shakespeare's Much Ado About Nothing. And on Friday, August thirteen, twenty twenty-one, from five thirty P M to seven P M for the annual summer bash. Second motion.
We'll move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Miss Omahaoni. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. It is unanimous. Item number seven on the agenda is was the Board to Consider Accepting the Donation of Map Forty parcel thirteen A located at the corner of Main Street and thirty-eight Cross Street. We did take that up under appointments and we did approve that request unanimously. Next is the uh Board to Consider the Approval of the two thousand uh twenty-one licenses for alcoholic beverages, automatic amusement, billiard room, class one vehicle sales, class two vehicle sales, common victorer and entertainment. Uh, so my hope for this is that we can take this up categorically rather than uh one applicant at a time. Is there any objections to that approach?
No objection.
Thank you very, very much for that. So the first category we are going to pick up is the all alcohol club. It is Fordham Associates Incorporated, D B A Lebo Temple, four ninety-nine Fordham Road. And forty-nine eighty-two Building Association Incorporated, D B A Knights of Columbus, one twelve Middlesex Avenue. The police chief has recommended approval with the uh one caveat of being that at least as of the time that he had uh submitted his recommendation. Uh, Daniel Woods of the um Knights of Columbus had not yet submitted a fingerprint for the uh fingerprint-based criminal background check. Uh, and I would recommend that we uh set the all alcohol club licenses for both uh the Lebo Temple and the Knights of Columbus food. Um, the understanding that the Knights of Columbus license will be held until uh Mr. Woods uh does submit to the fingerprint for uh the fingerprint ba- uh based criminal background check. Second motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion by Miss Omahaoni, second by Mr. Bendel. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel? I take that as an aye. I think your audio just cut out a little bit. Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. It's unanimous. Next is the all alcohol package store. Aviarc LLC, D B A Colonial Park Liquors, thirty-five Lowell Street, Unit Nine. Two eleven Lowell Street Corporation, D B A East Gate Liquors, two eleven J Lowell Street, Shop Right Liquors Incorporated, D B A Elias Country Store, three eighty-one Middlesex Avenue. Supertalk Licker of Massachusetts, D B A Target, two ten Balladvale Street. N R Wilmington Incorporated, D B A Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit, two fifty-eight Main Street. The police chief has recommended approval for all of these. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. DePalma, second by Miss Omahaoni. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. That is unanimous. Next is the all alcohol restaurant. Uh, we have the Restaurant of Boston LLC, D B A ninety-nine Restaurant Pub, number three zero zero seven nine, seven five nine nine, one forty-four Lowell Street. Green Sauce Incorporated, D B A Casablanca Mex- Mexican Restaurant, two oh seven Main Street. A N C Stone Incorporated, D B A Golden Ginger Restaurant, two twenty-five Main Street. Pacific Sunshine Incorporated, D B A Pacific Grove, two eleven E Lowell Street, AKA two seventeen Lowell Street. Pancho's Incorporated, D B A Pancho's Cantina, Unit Seven, two oh six Balladvale Street. B G P Tavern LLC, D B A Red Heat Tavern, three hundred Lowell Street. C and C Restaurant Group LLC, D B A Rocco's Restaurant, one ninety-three Main Street. L L M Incorporated, D B A Tremezo, two Lowell Street. Police Chief has recommended approval of those. Do I have a motion? A motion by Miss DePalma, second by Miss Omahaoni. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. It is unanimous. Of note, Michael's Place is not renewing. Uh, next is the automatic amusement license. Uh, we have one. It's K One Speed Incorporated, forty Fordham Road. Seventeen devices, fifteen renewal, two are new. We have a recommendation from the police chief, which is approval. Do I have a motion?
Two moves.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Miss Omahaoni, second by Mr. DePalma. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. Next is the billiard room license. We have one. It's K One Speed Incorporated, forty forty Fordham Road, four tables. The police chief recommends approval for this. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. DePalma, second by Miss Omahaoni. Do I have discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel? Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. It is unanimous. The next is the class one vehicles uh sales. We have Dubia Auto Group Incorporated, D B A Bill Dubia Hyundai, two seventy-one Main Street and Simo- Simone Automotive Incorporated, D B A Cornerstone Automotive and Cornerstone Mitsubishi, five eighty Main Street. The police chief has recommended approval of these. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
A motion by Mr. Bendel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kira. Do I have discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. That is unanimous. The next is the class two vehicle sales. We have Wilmington Shell Incorporated, D B A Advanced Auto Technologies, seven seventy-nine Wilbon Street, B and L Enterprises eight eighty Main Street, DJ Auto Sales, one twenty-seven Main Street, Forest Auto Repair, six hundred Main Street, Heavy Equipment Connection Incorporated, two thirty-nine Andover Street, Imperial Auto LLC eight forty-five Wilbon Street, Suite D, J and E Services Corp., six nineteen Rear Main Street, Triple Nickel Auto Body and Repair LLC, five fifty fi- uh five fifty-five Main Street, Naya Incorporated, D B A Z and S Gas and Service, six oh three Main Street. The police chief has recommended approval for these. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. DePalma, second by Mr. DePalma. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. It is unanimous. The next is forty-two uh applications for common victorer license. Uh, for all of these, the Board of Health and the Building Inspector have recommended approval. We have ninety-nine Restaurant of Boston LLC, D B A ninety-nine Restaurant Pub, number three zero zero seven five one forty-four Lowell Street. We have A and J M Corporation, D B A AJ's Kitchen, one sixty-two Lowell Street. Fordham Associates Incorporated, D B A Lebo Temple ninety-nine Fordham Road. Sail LLC, D B A As Good As It Gets Cafe, thirty-five Lowell Street. The Storin Corporation and L B K LLC, D B A Burger King, two two eighty Lowell Street. Green Sauce Incorporated, D B A Casablanca Restaurant, two oh seven Main Street. Bon Kai Incorporated, D B A Chinawak, three twenty-nine Main Street. Chris Convenience Incorporated, D B A The Corner Store, two ninety-six Choshine Avenue, Suite One. Country Chef Restaurant, one thirty-nine Main Street. Adam Don- Adams Donuts Incorporated, D B A Duncan, two eleven Lowell Lowell Street. DJ Q Donuts LLC, D B A Duncan, sixty-six S Concord Street. Hannan Donuts LLC, D B A Duncan three fifty-seven Middlesex Avenue. Jane Reed Donuts LLC, D B A Duncan, two oh six Balladvale Street. C and C Donuts Incorporated, D B A Duncan, one ninety-five Main Street. Wilmington Donuts Incorporated, D B A Duncan, three twenty-one Main Street. A N C Stone Incorporated, D B A Golden Ginger Restaurant, two twenty-five Main Street. Heidi Burgers LLC, D B A The Habit Burger Grill one ninety-six Balladvale Street, Unit One. Wilmington Heavenly Donuts LLC, D B A Heavenly Donuts, five seventy-nine Main Street. D D K Baking LLC, D B A Jose's Bakery, two Lowell Street, Unit Eight. K One Speed Incorporated, forty Fordham Road. Forty-nine eighty-two Building Association Incorporated, D B A Knights of Columbus, one twelve Middlesex Avenue. Doodle Sack LLC, D B A La Rosa's, Unit two eleven, two sixty-nine Main Street. Song Huang Incorporated, D B A Lynn Garden, thirty-five Lowell Street. T H McCoy Restaurant Group LLC, D B A McDonald's Restaurant, two twelve Main Street. Mona's Kitchen, sixty-six U Concord Street. Next Pizza Roast Beef and Stubbs, three thirty-one Main Street. Pacific Sunshine Incorporated, D B A Pacific Grove, two eleven E Lowell Street, AKA two seventeen Lowell Street. Pancho's Incorporated, D B A Pancho's Cantina, Unit Seven, two oh six Balladvale Street. P R Restaurants LLC, D B A Panera Bread, two twenty-eight Main Street. K Q Incorporated, D B A Peter's Pizza Roast Beef and Seafood, two Lowell Street. Pizza Day, two oh six Balladvale Street. B J P Tavern LLC, D B A Red Heat Tavern, three hundred Lowell Street. Saint Moses Incorporated, D B A Briz's Roast Beef and Pizza, three hour church, three units, one and two. C and C Restaurant Group Incorporated, D B A Rocco's Restaurant, one ninety-three Main Street. Starless Two Corporation, D B A Samar's Super Roast Beef, two seventy-nine Main Street. Starbucks Corporation, D B A Starbucks Coffee, number one one seven five seven two fifty-three Main Street. Watertown Enterprises, D B A Subway, two oh six Balladvale Street, Unit Two. C D C Diner, D B A Sunnyside Cafe, two Jefferson Road. Target Corporation, two two ten Balladvale Street. L L M Incorporated, D B A Tremezo, two Lowell Street. W F Pizza Company LLC, D B A Tremezo Pizzeria, two ninety-six Choshine Street. Jalev Enterprises LLC, D B A Wilmington House and Pizza, three twenty-five Main Street. Of note, not renewing is Michael's Place on Lowell Street and Subway number six six three thirty-one uh at three thirty-seven Main Street. Again, the Board of Health and the Building Inspector have recommended approval of all the aforementioned uh common victorer licenses. Do I have a motion?
Action.
So move.
A motion by
Second.
Uh, Mr. DePalma, and we'll accept that as a second by Miss Omahaoni. Discussion?
Very impressive timing there, Mr. Chairman.
Did you practice that? How many times?
Absolutely. I asked, I asked Miss Dalton and Mr. Hull to send me this weeks in advance. I've been practicing this since probably Veterans Day.
I would note, just for the record, that that was done in uh two minutes and one second.
Gotta be a rec.
Not get past two seconds less and you would have been under two.
I see Chief Desmond is still on the line, so I'm sure I'm gonna be getting a speeding ticket at some point soon.
Yes.
Seeing no further discussion of any substance whatsoever, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Bendel?
Matt, please. Aye.
Mr. Kira?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Miss Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I M E S as well. I can't tell. I I am one of the Can't tell, I, I am one of the auctioneers at the Rotary Auction and seeing as though, though there was no auction this year, I had to put that absolutely otherwise useless skill to use. The last class of license on this item on the agenda is the entertainment license. We have Green Sauce LLC, I'm sorry, Green Sauce Incorporated, DBA Casablanca, two oh seven Main Street, Pacific Sunshine Incorporated, DBA Pacific Grove, two eleven E Lowell Street, AKA two seventeen Lowell Street. BJP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, three hundred Lowell Street. CNC Restaurant Group Incorporated, DBA Rocco's Restaurant, one ninety-three Main Street. L L M Incorporated, DBA Tremezo, two Lowell Street. Ponchos Incorporated, DBA Ponchos Cantina, two oh six Balladvale Street, Unit Seven. Of note, Michael's Place is not renewing their entertainment license. For the other aforementioned uh institution or uh establishments, the police chief has recommended approval. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Okay.
A motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. De Palma, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Kira.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I M E S. as well, that is unanimous. So, the next item on the agenda is item number nine. It's the board to consider executing the Alcoholics Beverages Control Commission, two hundred, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one seasonal population increase estimation form. Uh so that form is uh is in your packet and is estimating that there will be no seasonal uh population increase, uh which is consistent with prior years. Do I have a motion?
Motion will stop.
Motion by Mr. De Palma.
Second it.
Second by Ms. Omahaoni, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kira.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
I M E S. as well, that is unanimous. Last board to consider item is issuing a Sunday entertainment license to K one Speed Incorporated, forty Fordham Road. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. De Palma, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Kira.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I M E S. as well, it is unanimous. Mr. O'Neil, we are on to public comments. Do we have any callers?
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I just jump in before you go, go there? So with, with respect to these various documents, uh uh you can sign those on the DocuSign. Uh I believe in the uh document associated with the uh deed will have to be signed in person.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Chair, we currently have no callers. All right, so I'll give it a minute or two. Uh to make a public comment, please feel free to dial one six four six five five eight eight six five six. The meeting ID is eight three zero nine six five nine seven two nine one. You will press pound and then press pound again at next voice prompt. And then you will need to press star nine to raise your virtual hand.
Everyone's sitting in traffic trying to look at the Christmas lights.
They're missing out on this pretty authentic picture of Mr. Kira.
What are you saying?
Pay no attention to Mr. Bendel, Mr. Kira.
I try not to.
Definitely not photoshopped.
Yeah, we need new still pictures there.
Yes, we do.
Mr. O'Neil, do you have anybody on the line? Mr. Chair, we do not. All right, I'm gonna call it at that point. Uh I think we've waited at least a minute. Uh we're on to announcements. We're gonna go a little bit out of order. Ms. Omahaoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have two announcements tonight. The first is I just wanted to thank uh the community, the Knights of Columbus, um the WOW Board and all of the volunteers. We had our virtual Festival of Trees which was obviously very different for our tenth uh Festival of Trees. We didn't expect to have to do it this way, but it was all online. The Knights of Columbus was very gracious in letting us kind of take over the hall to set it up for a week and uh it was very, very successful. Uh we still had a lot of fun with it and we look forward to next year, hopefully when we're doing it in person again as, as we should be. Um the second statement I actually wrote, which you know, I never do, but I wanted to make sure um that I said it right, so I'm deeply disappointed that I need to make this statement. Recently, it's been brought to my attention that certain accusations have been made to our chairman regarding my residency or alleged lack thereof in Wilmington. These baseless rumors stem from certain individuals uncomfortably fixated interest in my personal life. I will respond twofold. First, my personal private life is no one's business. Be it on this board. Hold on, sorry. Be it on this board nor in the greater Wilmington community. It's a shameful aspect of our continuously emerging social media gossip culture that this accusation, accusation has even arisen. Anyone who had any questions? Whether they sit on this board as my colleague or they live out in the broader scope of our town should have addressed them to me directly, had they the courage to do so. Second, yes, I am currently going through a divorce. And yes, I currently have a boyfriend who owns a home in Tewksbury. I have never stopped being a resident of Wilmington for seventeen years now. I have owned a home here. It is my residence. It is my primary and only residence. My voting address is in Wilmington and my children continue to be educated in our school system. As my divorce process continues on, I will remain a Wilmington resident as this is my home. And I will continue to serve my home as a select person until the voters, not the anonymous texters, say otherwise. We need a town run by informed adults and I will not entertain a town affected by adolescent whisper campaigns. This will be my first and last statement of this nature in this forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omahaoni. Any other announcements? Mr. Bendel.
Women, thank you very much. Uh I just want to wish each one of you uh very Merry Christmas and to your families as well, Mr. Hall. To you and to uh all of our town employees, Merry Christmas. Thank you all for what you do. The residents of our town, Merry Christmas. Uh and I also want to give a special thanks to the Wilmington Police and Fire Department. Uh and everybody else who was involved, EPW and many other private businesses, uh fire mentioned Santa Parade. It was incredible. They literally went all day long. It felt like they hit every street in this community. I think they were very well received. I know they were on my street. It seemed like everybody seemed to come out. From pictures I've seen, looks like they came out on every road and it was really a great day for our kids and for our community. As the chief mentioned, the amount of uh donations that were collected was incredible. So testament to our community and again, I wish you all very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Mr. Kira.
Yes, uh I echo Mr. Bendel's uh comments. The Santa Parade went driving by the house here and it it looked like it had a uh ton of cars and a lot of fun going on, going by here. Uh you could hear the, the sirens for, for quite for quite some uh miles. Uh I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy and, and most importantly, a healthy new year. Uh hopefully, uh twenty twenty-one will be much different than twenty twenty. Um so Merry Christmas all.
Thank you. Mr. De Palma.
Thank you. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I want to say one thing right now. The town of Wilmington needs more people like Joe Mario Omahaoni. Trust me when I say this is an honest woman, who I'm proud to call my friend and associate. Nothing like that should be said. I uh shame, shame, shame. And uh again, Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year and enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. De Palma. Yeah, I, I like nothing that I can say that that's different from what my colleagues have said, but uh this has been a trying year. Uh and specifically echo Mr. Kira's point. I'm hopeful that twenty twenty-one is better than twenty twenty, but uh there's been an awful lot in twenty twenty that we have seen the best in people in Wilmington, whether it be the Santa Parade, uh whether it be uh the volunteers that's um not only we've had for different events that are either donating or trying to help out where they can, but the folks that we know are gonna volunteer the second that we put out a call to um health professionals to help out Chili New House and the Health Department. And we absolutely know that there are so many good people uh in Wilmington that just want to help and help make our community better. So uh I continue to think that this is really the best place to, to live and to raise a family. Um I think in a, a difficult year, there is at least some comfort in knowing that this is really um a wonderful community to be a part of. So I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. I look forward to working with you uh and seeing you all in a better twenty twenty-one. Mr. Hall, if you had anything to add, feel free.
I guess the only comment I would offer, and this was uh something that was passed along to me from Pam McKenzie, who received uh it was a closing remark on a piece of correspondence, uh and it said, stay positive, test negative. Um but Merry Christmas, everyone, and uh Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. New business. All right, seeing none. Mr. Hall, can you walk us through important dates?
Yes, uh important dates. Tomorrow evening is the Town Hall School Admin Building Committee. This is the first uh meeting. Uh proposals were submitted. Uh I believe there are fifteen in total and the group will be meeting tomorrow night to uh decide uh on a, a selected group uh to call for interviews. So that is tomorrow evening at six P M. virtual. Uh December twenty-fourth, town offices closed. December twenty-fifth uh is Christmas Day, town offices closed. Uh December thirty-first, town offices are closed at noon. Uh January one is New Year's Day, town offices will be closed. Uh then January fourth through the fifteenth, curbside collection of Christmas trees. Uh January eleventh is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, virtual, seven P M. Um January eighteenth, Martin Luther King Day, town offices closed. Uh meeting, uh next meeting beyond that is January twenty-fifth, Board of Selectmen virtual, seven P M. The Town Manager's Fiscal Twenty-two Budget Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Last item on the agenda is our salute to service. Ken Krips is a Navy veteran that proudly served aboard the USS Wadley. Ken is a longtime Wilmington resident and volunteered many years as a Wilmington Little League coach. Ken and his wife Bev were also very involved with local heroes for many years. And assisted packing tens of thousands of care packages to send overseas to Wilmington's brave men and women serving in the military. Ken is also a Gold Star family member. His uncle John A. Krips was killed in action on February twenty-five, nineteen forty-four in Austria. Sergeant John Krips was shot down while serving in the US Army Air Corps during World War Two. We'd like to salute Ken and thank him for his service to our country and to the Wilmington community. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Two, Mr. De Palma, and I'm desperate for a second. Second by Mr. Kira. Mr. Bendel. Mr. Bendel, is your audio on or your audio leaves?
I'm still here, I think. I haven't been kicked out yet.
I'll take that as a yes, Mr. Kira.
Aye.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I M E S. Good night and Merry Christmas, all of you.
Merry Christmas.
See you next year.